Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:06 PM. I would like to call to order the October 2nd, 2024 Parent and Community Advisory Council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss why we are here and what we hope to accomplish as an advisory council. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the PGCPS Board webpage for public to review later. Ms. Mailhouse, can you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. Ms. Mashira Durden. Latanza Wilson. Aileen E. Lobo Correas. Teresa Smith.
Yeah.
Dolores Mailhouse here. Josara Rojas Hinton. Shadé Davis.
Present.
Rebecca Brown.
Present.
And for civic community representatives, we have Ms. Carlita Lundie.
Present.
Okay, Chair, we don't have a quorum.
Ms. Hinton is here. Did you count her?
Ms. Hinton?
Yes.
Okay, so I was listening for voices while I was reading the list, so...
Yes, you called me.
Okay. Okay. So, we need nine people for a quorum.
Can we do the count again? I think I'm counting nine.
Okay, I see. Okay, so I'm not hearing nine, so I'm not looking up to... So... Okay. So, we're gonna... Mr. Pat... Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge that in order to be counted for quorum, there needs to be a voice in the affirmative.
Yes.
If they be present, but they do have to say "present" or "here" to be counted.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're gonna try this one more time. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Mailhouse.
Mashira Durden. Latanza Wilson. Aileen E. Lobo Correas.
Is that the parent who needs translation? Her name is here, but I don't...
Yes.
Yeah. So, she may be in the room for simultaneous interpretation.
There she is. But we have interpreters here to assist, right? Yes.
My name is Iliana Stivenson, and I'm the interpreter for the parent.
Okay. So, that's a present, correct? They're here.
Buenas tardes. She said, "Good evening, good afternoon, everybody."
See? Okay. Teresa Smith.
Here.
Dolores Mailhouse, present. Josara Rojas Hinton.
Present.
Shadé Davis.
Present.
Rebecca Brown.
Present.
Ms. Carlotta Lundie.
Present.
Okay, and Ms. Durden, I see you are here. Ms. Durden, are you present?
Yes, ma'am. Present.
Okay. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Well, welcome to the Parent and Community Advisory Council. I am Ms. Teresa Smith, Chair and Representative for District 6. I hope everyone is doing well and that the school year is going great for your districts and your individual communities. For parents, teacher-parent conferences are around the corner, so I hope that you guys are prepared for those discussions. I see that we have some new faces this evening. So, I would like to allow them to briefly introduce themselves. And I apologize, names are very important, but I did not have an opportunity to review the names prior to the meeting and the pronunciation. So, if I mispronounce your name, please do not charge it to the heart. So, let's start with Ms. Hilton. Would you please introduce yourself?
So, my name is Josaida Rojas Hinton, and I'm representing District 8.
Thank you. Is it Ms. Haylen? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Señora Haylen, mi nombre es Iliana. Yo soy su intérprete. Quisiera hacer una introducción. Señora Lobo? ¿Quiere introducirse al panel, por favor? Señora Haylen Lobo Correas, ¿puede dejarnos saber si está presente?
I think she was on the list of participants. I don't see her anymore.
Ms. Mailhouse, does that impact our quorum?
Oh, no, she's there. She's there, but...
She's there.
She's trying to connect to the audio.
Oh, okay. No, she's already stated that she was present.
Yes.
So...
She's there, but her audio and screen is closed. Señora Haylen Lobo, ¿puede abrir su micrófono e introducirse, por favor?
Yeah, so we have ten members present, so we only need nine.
We can come back to her. Oh, she opened her microphone. Señora Haylen Lobo Correas? Maybe we can come back to her.
Sure. We'll come back once we have the district reports. Thank you. Thank you for attempting to introduce yourself as well. We'll figure the technology out. All right. So, I would like to move forward with our agenda. The next item is the adoption of the October 2nd, 2024 meeting agenda. Are there any objections to adopting the October 2nd, 2024 meeting agenda? Here are none. The meeting agenda is approved. Approval of the meeting minutes for the September 4th, 2024 meeting. Are there any objections to approving the meeting minutes from the September 4th, 2024 meeting? Here are none. The meeting minutes are approved. The next item is the report of the PCAC Chair. So, on October 22nd, Vice Chair Mailhouse led a discussion with parents who attended the Fourth Annual Parent-Community Summit that was hosted by Board Members Walker, Harris, and Ms. Frazier. The talk centered around the value in parent engagement. Additionally, she and I participated in a discussion topic about testing. Parents learned about the types of tests that are issued and how often testing is done with our scholars. On September 10th, PCAC met with the Strategic Planning and Change Management Team, and we were presented with the Communication Plan for the Culture and Climate Survey. The survey was launched yesterday, October 1st. Students and families can complete the survey, and the upper-grade levels will have an opportunity to complete it in their social study classes. There is a request that we utilize the Climate and Culture Survey Communications Toolkit to help get the word out about participating in the survey. Once I receive the toolkit, I will share it with you all via email. PCAC is invited to attend the Fifth Annual PGCPS Family Institute Conference that is being held on November 9th, 2024. Vice Chair Mailhouse and I will be leading a session on parent engagement. We do have a request that each district representative share the comments related to this event with their families. And then, my last item. On today, I attended the first meeting with the 2025-26 School Year Calendar Committee. There is not anything to report out just yet. We had our first meeting, so there will be more discussions and then information forthcoming. This concludes the Chair's report. Are there any questions? Here are none. We will now have the report of the Superintendent Desanines. The Chair recognizes Dr. Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Varden, I submitted a PowerPoint presentation just to... But I don't have to go through it. You all will have it in your notes. Chair Smith has already talked about the biggest thing we have happening this fall will be our November 9th Family Institute Conference. We are so excited. We're expecting over 1,000 people, so be there early and so that you can make sure you get a good parking space and have fun during that day. But in that PowerPoint, I talk about systemic updates from the Division of Communications. As you can see, there are a lot of things happening that we are amplifying from that division. We'll be having a ribbon cutting for the student-built house. Ribbon Week will be recognized, and that's an opportunity for us to build empathy and compassion in our system about meeting the needs of families in need and students in need. A lot of things are happening in the month of October. Of course, you all already talked about Monday is Parent-Teacher Conference Day. Why should I say October 6th? I do apologize. I may have the wrong date of the week. But it's so important, parents, for you to make sure that you have that conversation with your child's teacher, to make sure that your child is on track. Again, as parents, you are your child's first teacher, so your voice is really important, and your opportunity to communicate with your teachers are extremely important as well. So, we want to encourage that. I also shared information in the PowerPoint that talks about the registration for the event on November 9th. We are providing buses from three different hubs in the county, but parents must pre-register to be eligible to ride a bus so that they can... The bus will bring them to and from Oxon Hill High School. We have free childcare, free breakfast, free lunch. We have interpretation and translations available, national renowned speakers, and of course, our own PCAC leaders will be leading a session as well. So, we encourage you to please sign up and please come. The Family Institute is going strong. On the 24th, we had a session getting ready for parent-teacher conferences, and we had over 90 parents who participated, and we were really happy about that because it's tough. You know, sometimes when parents get home in the evening, they have children and homework and dinner, so we were excited about that. The next one we had was about parent view, and we had over 150 parents and families participate in that. The next one, on October 8th, will be about our famous Stop Finder. So, we are still, you know, growing in transportation, trying to responding to the audit to put some new measures in place, and so it's a growth process. We know that we're not perfect, but we're continuing to grow and move forward and that in the PowerPoint is a link to register for any of those parent and family institution sessions that we offer. We're excited that this year we are up to 100 parent engagement assistants. That means 100 schools have hired a parent engagement assistant, and that's their boots on the ground to help them really keep family engagement at the top of the conversations in that school. They help build culture, build teacher capacity to interact well with families and embrace them as well. And they will be joining us all day on October 14th for their monthly professional development. They also are helping systemically. They will be staffing, of course, parent-teacher conferences, Our Men Make a Difference Day, and any systemic initiative that requires extra hands, we elicit our PEA's to help with that. I want to let you know that PEA Recognition Week will be honored by the Board of Education. That's in the process of being approved. It will be the week of November 4th through the 8th, and we actually will have a PGCPS PEA Celebration Day on November 7th. But again, we just want to honor the people who are keeping us focused in our district on the importance of engaging families. We have our first quarterly conversation for parent leaders, and all PCAC members are invited to that. It will be on October 14th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at John Carroll at that administrative building. And again, it's for parent leaders. And if you have not received an invitation, please let me know, and I'll make sure that you get one because, again, interpretation services will be available. Our first parent conversation of the year always honors and invites our superintendent, who will be there to give not only address, but it's really a Q&amp;A session. So, you will have an opportunity as parents and parent leaders to engage with him and his executive staff, who will be there that night. I just want to do a shout-out for the staff in family engagement. We've been invited to present nationally at the National Association for Family School and Community Engagement in Denver, Colorado in October. I will be leading a session called Boots on the Ground because I tell people I'm the dinosaur. I've been around a long time. I know a lot about our parent engagement assistant program. We used to be called parent liaisons, but that started back in the 80s. We're going to talk about how we have sustained and expanded that work in our county. And then, my family engagement specialist and I will lead a session called What's in a Town? And it talks about equitable engagement of families, how we treat different communities differently based upon who lives there, what schools are there, and what we need to do differently. So, we're excited about that work. And our team from Community Partnerships will be hosting volunteer coordinator training for every school in the district on October 15th. So, they will be talking about how to get families involved in being volunteers in our schools and supporting their children in that manner. So, do we have any questions? That was a lot of information. I will start with, I see Ms. Smith's hand.
Please. I was gonna let Vice Chair Mailhouse go first.
Yes. So, Ms. Smith, go ahead, because I'm trying to... Can we take the presentation down? So, I can... I'm sorry, I can't.
No problem. So, I only have one question, Dr. Jackson, and it's related to the September 15th date, understanding the IEP. I was wondering if there would be any discussion around 504s as well, or is this just solely dealing with IEPs?
Ms. Young will talk about everything special education on that night. So, it's very important, and it's one of our most popular sessions. She actually presents twice during the year because there's a lot of information, lots of questions about students with special needs.
Excellent. Thank you. Vice Chair Mailhouse?
Yes, thank you. And so, the title is IEPs, though.
Yep, that's how she starts because that was the request for the majority of parents who filled out our survey, but I asked her to talk about everything in special education.
Okay. And so, can something go out to make sure that parents are aware that it will be discussed? That all parts of special education will be addressed in her presentation? Because 504 is not an IEP, and so, right? And I wouldn't particularly attend if my child doesn't have an IEP. So, is there any way that we can kind of just give some feedback or when you all are promoting the event itself to maybe kind of share and let people know? Is it too late for that?
It is too late, but I will talk to the people who are promoting it for us and see if we can get a blurb put on the flyer that's out there.
And then, my other question is... And so, thank you, Chair Smith, for that. My other question is I see you have the volunteer training, right?
Yes.
All schools are invited.
Yes.
But can you speak around the focus for family engagement and what is being done to ensure that every schoolhouse is creating a welcoming environment for parent organization groups? Because you still have so many schoolhouses that don't have them. And especially now that I'm in high school, what I keep hearing is that high school parents are not involved. But I've been asking, and now we're on week six. Right? And so, what is happening around that piece? So, if you can kind of take that back to somebody to...
Well, I will share that we meet with principals every summer at their Summer Leadership Institute and make it clear that our Board of Education and our superintendent is very clear that every school must have a parent leadership organization, no matter what they call it. And so, if there's a school that does not, I need to know about that because we actually are running the update of the database right now that we provide for the Board of Education and superintendent about what schools actually have. So, some schools have PTA, some have... Or PTSA, some have PTO, PTSO, some have parent advisory groups, some have parent clubs. It's really what that community decides that they would like to do, but every school has been told principals are held accountable for having opportunities to include parent voice and share decision.
So, I just... The accountability piece. So, I can just talk to you offline about it, but that is not... I understand that you may speak to individuals, but being on the front line, I'm here, right? I'm at a school, and so, it's not happening. And so, I know it's not happening across the board, so I just wanted to understand.
I want to share with everyone, though, as parent leaders, your options when these things are not happening is to go to the instructional director level and make your voice heard because I'm in office. I don't boss any principals. I don't have any power over them. But the people who do and who hold principals accountable are the instructional directors and the associate superintendents.
Right.
So, we have given the directive. It comes from the superintendent. It's supported by the Board of Education that every school must have a parent leadership organization. When they do not, we need parents to use their voice and amplify that concern to the instructional director level. That will then activate what that principal needs, whether it's training for my team or support. We go to schools and help them establish parent leadership organizations, but we can't go in there without that blessing from the instructional director or even the associate superintendent at that level.
Yes, I understand that, and I don't want you to think that I was asking you or your team to go in and do that. It was more so a systemic question, right? And so, I appreciate your response. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Jackson? All right, here are none. The Chair recognizes Ms. Welsh.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to share where we are with some policy work and that you know what's coming up in the Policy and Governance Committee. Just so, in case you're interested, if you'd like to come, you're always welcome to provide public comment at the meeting, as well as there's always a period for public comment on each policy. So, first, I will share the policies that went to the Board on last Thursday and that are now going up for public comment. There's two that were revised. One is Policy 4113, and it's Community Involvement in the Principal Selection Process. And in that policy, the committee did decide to add, we have received public comment on that policy in terms of... And including, I think the public comment talked about two parents for special... Two parents of students receiving special education, students for the school, for the actual... It's an interview panel that's made up of the community members for that particular school, and the committee decided to add one parent. And they also did include that they wanted to ensure that the parent had had some CECAC training, therefore, they were well-informed and knew, you know, they could be definitely an advocate for your child as the principal went through the interview process and with the panel. So, that's up for public comment. And then, the other one is the Board of Education Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups. And that came back up for revision because in one of the bills that passed two years ago, it talked about the fact that, starting this year, the Board of Education needed to have an audit committee. And so, the Board of Education has started the audit committee, and so, that will be one of their standing committees. So, we had to revise that policy to incorporate the audit committee. So, those are the two policies that came up for... That'll be up for public comment. We also rescinded... The committee voted on rescinding numerous policies, mainly because I don't know if anyone was at a board meeting where the parliamentarian actually recommended that there be rules of procedures and that we do away with all the bylaws, the board's bylaws, and whatever didn't go into the rules of procedure would then become a policy. So, the ones that we are rescinding at this point, that's going through the process, is the Chair, the Vice Chair, which is 9210, the Chair, 9220, the Vice Chair, and 9230, the Secretary, Treasurer, and Executive Officer, which is actually the superintendent. And the reason those three are recommending for rescission is out for public comment is because all three of those were put together into a policy that's called the Board Officers, which then it talks about all three of them. So, there's no need to have duplicate policies. And then, we have the actions by individual board members, which is Policy 9270, and that's up for rescission because the Board already has a policy. It's 0108, and it's the Board's Code of Conduct. And within that policy, it actually talks about the fact that individual board members cannot act as individuals representing the Board unless they truly are saying or talking about or whatever, something that the Board has officially voted on, and it is now the position of the Board. And if they are talking about or doing something that's personal to them, then they always must specify that "I'm not talking to you as a board member. I'm talking to you as a person, you know, community member, human being," because the Board itself always should be operating as a unit. So, and that's already sitting in Policy 0108, so there is no reason to have the same policy, a piece of that policy repeated again. And then, the last two, Policy 9361, which has to do with meetings, time, and place, and then, Policy 9367, Meetings, Quorum, and Adoption of Formal Action. Both of those have encompassed into the Rules of Procedure, which the Board of Education voted on and adopted. So, those are being rescended. So, these are all the ones that are out for public comment. And it'll be out... The Board voted on that last Thursday, so they'll be out for two weeks. And that's an opportunity to be able to provide a public comment. In addition to that, on October 22nd is the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting. And the policies that they are going to be looking at is... They're going to be looking at Policy 9340, which has to do with policy development, and that is... And that is, the reason they're doing that is because these new rules of procedures have changed some of the things that are in that policy. So we need to update the policy. We are also bringing back board policy five one one three at the request of one of our board members, which is attendance, absence, and truancy. Because there have been, I think, I think constituents or people in the community have shared with board members their concerns that a lot of times attendance isn't always recorded correctly for students. And so students might be, like, a student might be really penalized for something that they really had nothing to do with. Like, for example, if a bus is running late, you know, that, and the student's not in the classroom for the first class because the bus isn't there, then you can't, you can't penalize the student because the bus ran late. Or just, you know, just different things. We have a whole list of all the things that are considered lawful absences that need to be reported or recorded correctly for the student. So we are bringing that back for conversation and possibly revision. And then on the twenty second, we are also going to be looking at bullying, harassment, or intimidation. And the reason that's coming back, because last year, the Policy Committee requested that they have the opportunity. So the, the Maryland State Department of Education requires us to provide, by, I think it's by the end of the year, the end of the calendar year, a report, a report on bullying. And they ask for a wide variety of information on the bullying in terms of, you know, first of all, the number of students who are bullied, then all the demographics, and then they also look at age groups, you know, there's at elementary, middle, or high, just a wide variety. And then they also look at students with disabilities. And when we looked at that information, it appeared that it was disproportionate for students with disabilities. And so we wanted to come back to the table to relook at that policy because, and to address what that data is showing. So that's coming back up this upcoming year. And then, uh, uh, policy, all the by, the board had voted to move all the bylaws into policies. And so policy, it was ninety two sixty five, the, the bylaw, and now it's the policy ninety two sixty five, which is procedure to evaluate the superintendent. That's up for to look at. And then last legislative session, a bill passed, it was House Bill seven eighty five, Senate Bill seven thirty eight. And that actually was on the evaluation of library materials. And so, and that particular bill requires a policy on the evaluation of library materials. So we will be addressing that in the, in that meeting. And then the other one we're bringing back to the table is field trips, which is board policy six one five three. And if you recall, last year, we did bring field, we had a whole conversation about the field trip policy, which had to do with possibly increasing the ratio of students to staff for chaperones and also eliminating the, eliminating the need to have a matching staff members, matching number of staff members. Because the, number one, it was really burdensome for a school, school that might also already be short on staff to now have to be sending their staff, you know, along with all these chaperones to the, to this particular field trip. So that was a major part of it, as well as the more chaperones you have, the more it increases the cost of the field trip for parents. So we, so that, we had made those, recommended those changes. And now there's more changes have come up. Because one of the critical pieces when we send students on a field trip is to look at the risk factors and liability. Because safety is a major criteria in identifying locations of where we're going. In addition to looking at, it doesn't connect with the curriculum. And so we met, we had a major, a big committee that came back and relooked at, looked at all this. And now they are working, making revisions to the field trip, it's called student trip, as well as the student trip A P. They're also going to look at the foreign travel one. But in the process, though, the, the board, the committee requested that we bring that one back to discuss the process for approving field trips. So we're going to have a conversation about that. And they have requested information on, last year, how many, like, how many field trips did, did we go? The schools went to, like, in elementary, middle, and high, that type of thing. So we, I, I had that to share with them. So it's going to be a very full night on October twenty second. So, but there is a public comment section in that meeting. So please take advantage of the opportunity to come and give public comment on any of the policies that are going to be up for conversation on the, on the twenty second, because the committee always welcomes your public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Are there any questions? Well, I have a question. Vice Chair Mailhouse, would you like to go?
No, you can go first.
All right, thank you. It's regarding board policy forty one thirteen, the principal selection. I just wanted to go back to the piece about the C C A C training. I'm not sure if you have, if you're, if you're prepared to talk about this. But is there any details on why it's categorized as C C A C training versus specific types of topics that you would like the parents who have knowledge on?
No, I think, I think they, they just thought in terms of what's the source of training for parents. And they thought of, because C C A C does do a good amount of training, and that's why I think they said C C A C. But if you think that there should be specific things for that, that that parent should have training on to be, you know, a member of that interview committee, that it's out for public comments. So please feel free to share that information, because, you know, that's informative for the committee. And they might decide, well, yeah, we like to, you know, we, we want to incorporate that into that. So.
Okay, that's, that's great, because, yeah, sometimes, you know, you have parents who have knowledge, but they may not have necessarily participated in the trainings that were provided by C C A C.
Well, that, and that's very true, that absolutely is. Because many times, parents, I, my own experience, parents have, they pursue that information and they, and they're very knowledgeable without going to any kind of C C A C training. You're absolutely correct. So, no, please feel free to, you know, provide public comment, because it's gonna, it's out there for the, the community to give comment on.
Great. Vice Chair Mailhouse, thank you.
I, I, I do have a couple of questions. Ms. Welsh, can you repeat again, was it ninety two seventy?
Do you remember the topic, the subject?
I have board officer, and then I just.
Oh, actions by individual board members.
Okay, and that's being repealed because you have forty eighteen out there?
Because of zero one zero eight, board policy zero one zero eight, which is the code of conduct for board members.
And so that, that's a good question. So that is supposed to govern the work or the behavior of the board, I should say, right?
Correct.
When I look at that policy.
Oh, and board member, the board as well as individual board members.
Exactly, right? So when I look at it, if there is a violation, where does it go?
Well, that's a very good question.
So I'll leave it like that, we'll put a pin in it. But I just, I want to put the question out there, because where does it go? If there is someone on the board, as, as, as a public member, right? If I see that there has been a violation, right? And we're going to speak, we're going, we're going to put quotes and make it hypothetical. Then, because these policies are supposed to help guide us to know what people are supposed to be doing and what governs the work.
Exactly, absolutely, absolutely.
Right? And so if there is someone or an entity that it's not following the policies that are in place, like on my job, I know what happens if I don't follow, right, the policies or code of conduct. I know what happens, I know the reporting components, I know what happens, right? So, you know, if they're repealing certain things, in the policy, this policy wouldn't have an A P procedure that aligned with it, right? How do I know as a, a public, right, I can get public comment?
So I, I think that's an excellent question. So I have had conversations about compliance with policies, just to say, how is that being tracked or whatever? So I, I think certainly, as a member of the community, you absolutely have a right to ask that question. And I think it's a good question. You know, because there are important things that are, that are listed on, in that, especially zero one zero eight has very, like, really good things that they, that all the board members should be following.
Okay, and then I, the, the other one is, I know you do policy and you work with policy and government, governance. But how do you all decide whether or not an A P should go along with any policy?
So, so it, so it depends on, of course, the nature of the A P. But most, I mean, the policy, most policies, except for like the board's internal policies that are, that are really driving what their behavior is. Generally, most policies need to have an A P to go with it. And the reason being is because policies are really the board's way of saying, this is what we want to see done. And we want you to do such and such, but they are not supposed to be telling the administration how to do it. So then the super, they're, they're basically saying to the superintendent, we authorize you to develop an administrative procedure that will basically lay out then how you're going to do what we have put into the policy. So it's, I think it's a, a critical piece, you know, that when we're writing the A P, and we spend a lot of time on these administrative procedures to try to ensure that they are clear so that the staff know exactly what they're supposed to do. And then also that they align with that policy, because that, that, that's the whole idea. Is that the, the administrative procedure is supposed to, you really, that tells you how to implement what, what needs to be done to do the, to do what's involved in the policy.
Okay, and Chair, I see Ms. Durden hands up, our Director, Mr. Fitzpatrick. He might have something important to tell us, because he's, he's chiming in.
Ms. Durden, we'll call you shortly, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I recognize you.
Thank you, Ms. Durden, for your patience, and thank you, Chair. I just want to share with everyone watching that if any point you feel that a board member or the board is not following the policy, those complaints go to our, there's a hotline for that, that goes through the Internal Audit Department. The number is one eight six 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 four six two five one two. Again, one eight six 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 four six two five one two. Now, the Internal Audit Department does not actually investigate board members because they report to the board, but there is a process for that to be investigated. I just don't want it out there that we're not following policy and there's no way forward. We had a great presentation at the Audit Committee yesterday about that process, and so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Durden, the chair recognizes you.
Thank you. I had a question around the, the filter approval process. I think you said that there's going to be something for a public comment. How can I find that? What's the best way to search that, so I can get that?
So the, for that, because it's being reintroduced on October twenty second. If you look at the agenda for the meeting, you'll see a section that's called public comment. And you, and I believe, and actually, Mr. Fitzpatrick probably can give more detail, because this is why he comes out of his office, is that they are, it tells you, like, how to sign up for public comment. So you can either sign up for public comment, or if, let's say, you couldn't make it, you could always actually submit a written comment at, for that public comment section. So for right now, you would just be doing it for that particular meeting on the twenty second.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No, but I do have a quick comment, and I just want to say, for the public watching, as well as our council, public comment does change things, right? And so when, when, you know, you can talk about the good things, as well as things that need to be changed. But whether you can make it out in person, whether, as Ms. Welsh said, you need to send in, right, your comments in writing, you can also do a video, right? Everything just has to remain under the three minutes. But please use all of those platforms to engage, you know, with our school district, but also reach out to your board members. And if you are not aware of when and how to sign up, let's encourage our board members to do a really good job in engaging with us, to send us that information, right? On a regular basis when they send out their newsletters. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much for sharing that. I will, I, I'm like a testament to that. Any opportunity that I can go to the board and present comment, whether I go or not, I have seen change happen. So thank you, thank you for putting that out there. If there are no more questions or comments, I want to. For their reports. Echo, I'm not sure trying to speak up. If so, please raise your hand. All right, we'll move forward with the discussion. The next agenda item is related to discussion and action items. I don't believe we have any unfinished business, but if we do, please let me know. I would like, since we have new people here, I would like the current, well, the older P C A C members to introduce themselves and provide any reports that you may have from your districts. So we will start with District One. Ms. Durden, could you please introduce yourself, and if you have any updates you would like to share?
Yes, my name is Ms. Sarah Durden, and I represent District One. I don't know of any major updates, there are a lot of fall festivals going on, going on around our district. Lots of school filter coming up. I did have a question, though, about a meeting that you guys said you attended on the testing. Is there a way to get any information that was provided to you guys in that meeting?
So that's a good question. I will, let me get back to you on that, I don't have an immediate response, because it was just open forum. But I can, I can circle back with the presenters and see if they have any information that they could share with families.
Okay, thank you.
District Two, oh, we don't have a representative for District Two, District Three? Maybe we don't have a representative for District Three. Ms. Hilton for District Four?
Ms. Hilton entered. I'm sorry, Chair Smith, we do have a representative from District Three, that is Ms. Lobo Corias. Is she on?
Señora Lobo, soy su intérprete. Necesita hacer alguna introducción o alguna información que quisiera compartir?
She's still having some technical difficulties?
Yeah, she's still on mute.
No problem. We'll get her next, at our next meeting. All right. I think we already did District Four and District Five. We don't have a representative for District Eight. Ms. Davis, would you like to introduce yourself?
No, I'm sorry, Chair, we do have a representative for District Eight. District Eight is Ms. Hinton, Señora Hinton.
Yes, yes, I'm representing District Eight, so I don't have any report today, it's my first time in a meeting. So hopefully next month, thank you.
Yes, yes, we, we understand that, and, and thank you for keeping me aligned, Ms. Mailhouse.
No, you're welcome. And if I could just ask, Ms. Hinton, if you could just share with us, you know, you're, you're here, you're with us. Do you have anything to kind of report about just being excited about being present with us today?
I am very excited, and one of the main things that made me being here is I E Ps. And I would like to be the voice of many parents, being one of them and having a lot of difficulties. And also with the community, like, I don't go to many meetings and I see firsthand many things that are going on that I would like other people to hear, and especially the board and the superintendent.
Okay, that's, that's exciting. And, and working very closely with your board member is, like, very important, because they're the face of engagement, right, for the community. And so we appreciate and we're glad you're here. Thank you, Ms. Chair Smith. Thank you.
Ms. Davis for District Nine, would you introduce yourself?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, everyone, my name is Shawde Davis, I'm representing District Nine. Happy to be new-ish to the team. Sorry, I'm not on camera tonight, I am out and about and in transit. But there are no updates for District Nine, and I'm looking forward to a phenomenal school year working with you all. Thank you.
Excellent, and then we, we are going to circle back to District Seven, Ms. Mailhouse.
All right, good evening, everyone. District Seven has been very, very busy. I'm represented by Vice Chair Dr. Harris, and who we are working very tirelessly with, especially Dr. Jackson and her team. But the superintendent to launch the first annual Mimic a Difference District Event. And so very excited about that. We had to postpone our parent advisory meeting. Um, and so very excited about that. Um, we had to postpone our parent, um, advisory meeting, because the first meeting, the quarterly meeting, as I told Dr. Harris, you cannot have a meeting on the same day. We will not compete, so we will be at the, um, meeting with the quarterly conversation that Dr. Jackson and her team shared. But we, um, have already sent out our letters to our Community Advisory Council, our Parent Advisory Council, as well as our Student Advisory Council for District Seven. So, um, there are several things that are going on. Uh, we will also move forward to, um, push out information to, um, work again with the school district, hopefully to do a district-wide data literacy event, where we are helping parents, um, become more acclimated in how to utilize these, um, uh, standardized tests that we are given, and how to partner with, um, our teachers, and utilize the magnificent resources that the school district has, such as the small group math tutoring that is starting next week. That concludes my report. District Seven.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then I am last. I represent District Six. Uh, my board member is Mister, um, oh my God, why's his name fell on me? Brandon Jackson. Good Lord. Um, I have been a part of P C A for two years now, and I'm very active with working with other families, especially on the special education side of things. So Ms. Hilton, I'm looking forward to working with you, um, hearing your ideas. I'm very active with our P T Os, well, our P T Os, my students, my children's P T Os. I sit, um, on our advocacy group at one of our schools, um, and we got a, we got a banging team, so we getting work done. So the only update I have for District Six is that this Saturday will be the first chat and chew, and I understand that the discussion topic is transportation. So families come out if you would like to hear information and, um, share information. And that is it. Did I miss anyone?
Um, the community partners.
That is right. Thank you. Ms. Lundie, do you have any updates this evening, and could you, um, introduce yourself to everyone?
Yes, I am off camera, cause I'm driving, but I can talk. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to our new members to P C A. Woo, woo, exciting, exciting. Um, yes, so don't have any, um, updates or anything like that right now, but I do have some, um, information I would like to share, um, as well as I have a, a question. I would, first of all, would like to, um, offline get with you and Ms. Milhouse to talk about some, um, things you would like to see, um, um, the civic and community, um, component of this, um, council, be really involved in, you know, to talk to you about what your vision is for, for, for us. Um, the next thing is I have been out in the community. I recently attended a caregiver's conference, where I met a lot of parents and guardians, grandparents and things like that. And I wanted to really seriously look at our parents and guardians who may need caregiver resources, um, who need, yeah, who, who may need caregiver resources, on top of everything else that they're doing for their children and how we can help. I don't even know if there's a, anything like that out there right now, um, any consideration by the board or the administration on that, but I definitely would like to talk to you or you and Ms. Milhouse about that. Um, that piece right there. And also, I wanted to, I see on the agenda, we're gonna be talking about P C A applications. I wanted to get clarity on, on, um, disposition for civic and community, just, cause I haven't received anything with respect to, am I on board, am I not on board? Because I have been serving for two years as well, and I have been, I have been really enjoying this, working with the parents and working with you all, and also working with my school board rep. I am in District Four, so my school, uh, board rep is Shayla Adam Stanford. So I just wanted to follow up with you, Chair, on, um, what is my status? And so that's all I have, so I'll be reaching out to you and Ms. Milhouse soon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, thank you for all of that. And we will be circling back about your question related to the P C A applications. Um, the next item of discussion is an election for recording secretary. So look, I'm so glad that we
I'm sorry, Chair. Um, we, we need to recognize, um, Ms. Rebecca Brown, our union representative.
Goodness, I'm, this is why I got a vice chair, y'all. Ms., Ms. Brown, you have the floor. Can you introduce yourself and provide any updates?
Absolutely. Uh, I'm Rebecca Brown. I am the P T C A U D rep for our P C A. Uh, for new members, welcome. Uh, I have been on P C A. This is my second year, so I'm still learning, and, uh, it's been a great, uh, great place to be. I get a lot of information from the parent, so I can actually kind of incorporate some stuff in my classroom. I can also bring it back to P T C A. Um, we can make things happen, so it's been a joy to work with, so welcome to the new members.
Awesome.
Uh, Mrs. Smith, maybe Ms. Uh, Haylene Lobo wants to introduce?
Okay, is, is, is her mic working?
Señora, uh, Lobo, puede, okay, muy bien, puede decir su nombre y si quiere compartir alguna información?
Hola, buenas noches a todos. Disculpa que desde hoy no pude conectarme bien con el audio, porque tenía problemas de internet, pero ya estoy en casa, ya tengo el internet bueno. Este, soy del Salvador, y este, soy padre de familia de dos niños aquí en el condado de Prince George. Por el momento, esta es mi primera, uh, reunión. Eh, me da gusto de escucharlos a todos, y estoy aprendiendo de cada uno de ustedes. Espero, eh, para la próxima reunión tenerles un poco más de información acerca del Distrito Cuatro.
Okay, good evening, every, uh, everyone. Uh, first of all, my apologies, I was having a lot of internet issues, but I was able to connect now. Uh, my name is Haylene Lobo Coria. I'm from El Salvador. I have two kids, and the schools of the Prince George's County Public Schools. And, uh, I, uh, right now, this is my first meeting with you guys, and I'm learning a lot. I promise you guys that my next meeting, I will have more information to share about District Four.
I'm on mute. Thank you. Welcome aboard, welcome aboard. And so I think I have one more person that needs to introduce themselves, and that would be our board member liaison, Ms. Frazier. If you're available to speak, would you, um, introduce yourself?
Hello, everybody. I'm Madeline Lasaya Frazier. I am your board representative for District Eight. I work hand in hand with Josaida Hinton. I'm very excited that she's with us. And, uh, bienvenida a la señora Lobos. Muy agradecida de que esté haciendo el labor para nuestro distrito. Muchas gracias. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Before I move on, Vice Chair Milhouse, did I get everyone?
Ye- yes, you did. I just need to make one correction, in that Ms. Um, Lobo Corias represents District Three.
Okay, so, señora, una corrección. Usted, señor, uh, representa al Distrito Tres, no Cuatro, tres.
Great, thank you all.
Okay.
Okay, so the next agenda item is one that we have been trying to deal with since, I think, what, last June? And that is selecting a sec, a recording secretary for P C A. So I would like to know, is there any nominations from the floor? We have a lot of people present today, and we need your help. And there's a lot of technology out here to help you with this task as well.
Chair? May I have the floor, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, for, for the district members and our community members, um, Dr. Jackson and, um, Ms., Ms. Welsh are, are really here as representatives, um, appointed by the superintendent. And so we, we are looking to our district and community members to, um, raise your hand, because this, this really is not just a sit and watch committee. And right now, I am operating in two roles as the vice chair and as a recording secretary. And so as I would always say to anybody who's looking to be a part of any type of group or organization, if you come in to look, this ain't the place for you. We, we here, we have to work, and we, we need help. So we have a vacancy. Um, we are meeting right now, um, probably maybe four hours for the month, including this meeting, cause we have our meeting that we meet with leadership, and then, um, they will be having joint meetings with us. But, um, I just want to say that piece, because we can't come back every single week and keep asking the same group of people, can you raise your hand to help out as recording secretary?
Thank you so much for sharing that. So there has to be one person, somebody.
Erinah.
We will be coming back to the membership next month. So hopefully you guys will have your speeches ready, so we can take a vote. All right. The next item is the P C A applications. So, Ms. Frazier, um, I had this on the agenda because I had not received an update at the time that I had to submit this, um, as it related to the vacancies. Um, I am aware that we do currently still have vacancies. So my question is, in addition to what Ms. Lundie put on the floor as well, um, could you share what the status is for the open vacancies and what has been communicated to applicants who have not been selected?
So I had a conversation with, um, uh, our chair and our vice chair from the board, and we discussed, um, the vacancies. Um, I believe that, uh, Chair Walker shared that if there is not a selection done by the vacant, uh, board members, um, by the end of this month, that, um, as a board, as a body, we will select someone for those districts, so you will have representatives for that. Um, as far as the, um, the letters or emails going out, I know that emails were sent to the members that were accepted. Uh, we did request, um, for emails to go out to anyone that had applied and did not get a, um, a placement, but I'm not sure where we are in that, in that state, so I'm wondering if, um, Mr. Fitzpatrick can share if that went out, cause I'm not sure.
Thank you, those have gone out. The only people who have not received communication are the people who have applied for one of the districts that have not been selected. Everyone else, uh, from all the districts represented here have received notification that, yes, you have been selected, or, I'm sorry, you were not selected. Please, um, save on.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
So I know that in the P C A mailbox, we're still, we're still rece, we are still receiving inquiries. So I guess this question might be to you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Should we forward those emails over to your, um, group for response? And I'm, and I'm, the, the reason why I'm asking this question is because P C A is not privy to who were a applicant and who was not, and who may have received an email. So at this point in the process, I don't know if it's appropriate for P C A to respond to those inquiries, cause we're, we're sort of in the dark.
I can work, uh, my office and can work alongside the Chief of Staff's office for the administration to make sure that we, we, um, support you in that manner.
Great, thank you. The Chair recognizes Ms. Y, Ms. Lundie?
Oh, thank you so much, um, Madam Chair. So I just had a question for Mr. Fitzpatrick. So, um, I don't recall seeing an email, so who, who should, who sent the email? Who should I look for? What email should I look for to search my emails, all of my emails?
I'll follow up with you offline, okay?
Oh, okay, all right. And my second question is, um, has the, um, uh, according to the chair, she said we are still getting, um, applications or what have you. So I was trying to find out, why is that? I thought the application process closed, so do we have something at the website, the board website, that says, you know, thank you for your interest? Application process or application time has closed in this, in these particular areas? And these are the open, and these are still the vac, these are the vacancies, and these, these are the, um, positions that have already been filled, so that people will stop, um, submitting applications if there, um, if there's no vacancy?
So the, the board office does not own the application process? It is my understanding, however, that the application window has been closed. Again, I will check on that tomorrow. But I think if I'm not misunderstanding, people may be emailing with inquiries. But a, again, that's something I will look at, work with the, um, appropriate office to look at tomorrow, to make sure, one, that the application window is closed, and two, that there is something posted notifying people that these positions have been filled. I know we did mention it at a board meeting, though.
Okay, all right. And, and do you have a point of contact number, or do you need my contact number to get in touch with me, or how do you want to do that?
I, uh, I believe I have your email address from the roster.
Oh, okay, fabulous. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lundie. The Chair recognizes Ms. Milhouse.
Thank you, Chair, um, Smith. And so this is for Board Liaison, um, uh, Frazier. So I, I have a question, and it is in response, cause I, I heard what, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick stated about the district seats. As it relates to the community seats, the business, civic engagement, um, faith-based, those seats require a vote of the entire board. And so from the applications that came through, have you all not yet, um, reviewed the community seats?
They have not come to the board for voting.
Okay, cause I know Ms. Lundie applied in the first group back in June, I mean, back in May. Not even in June, it was back in May. And so that, that's, that's interesting. And so then the other question that I have is, um, I know we had some members, um, that reapplied and may not have been selected. So is the board at any point going to recognize the work that they've done? Um, because this is a lot of work. And, and I, and I, and I am saying this in this way, um, because it is really, we're not here for the thanks, but we're also not here to be looked upon as if the work that we are doing is not creating a significant impact into the school system. And so since many of those members were under my watch, I am holding you all accountable to make sure that you recognize the work that they have done. And so I would like to say publicly that I am advising that we support the work that we're doing, but also acknowledge the work that those who may not be continuing to serve, even those individuals who students have graduated and been promoted out of the system.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I know that, um, the conversations that the board had is that we were going to recognize, um, all the, the work that was done by P C A members that are no longer part of the, uh, P C A Organis, uh, Committee. Um, we, once the, um, full board, uh, in November comes to, uh, fruition, since we're waiting for elections, and when we have our new board members, we are gonna make, uh, a full recognition of the people that have served and the new people that are on board, and also our new board members.
Thank you for that. And, and it would be great, not even just wait until November, to acknowledge any individual until you all do a public announcement of what you all are, you know, cause the timing is always of the essence. And, and this is, it is a lot of work that we're putting in. And, and we're doing more fighting than anything, and we don't want to fight anymore. We just want to collaborate and work and partner to get the work done.
Absolutely. I, I agree totally. I am going to personally make sure that, uh, letters go out and that we recognize all the members that have no, um,
and that we recognize all the members that have, um, served and no longer with us. But it will be a public display in November. But definitely prior to that, we will send out letters. Thank you for that.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Ms. Lundie.
My, my fingers. Okay, hi, how you doing? Okay, so I'm, I forgot one thing, um, uh, Madam Chair. So, I did want to, for the public, because I think this is very important, I did want to, um, inform the public and to remind the public as a part of civic and community that we do have elections coming up in November and we do have some of our school district seats that are runoffs. And we also have, um, a district seat where, um, I think it's District Four, my district, where we have a representative running. So, Ms., um, our liaison can, um, clarify this for me. But I think we have, um, um, contests in District One, District Four, District Five, Seven and Eight. So, we want to make sure that you all who are voting are at your correct polling places so that you can vote for your local school board representatives. That is so very important. And so I just want to bring that up, um, because I think that's very important that we get the school board members that you would like to have on there. And if you're not at your correct polling place, you're not going to be able to vote for your local judges or your local school board reps. So, make sure that you're at your local polling place and vote for your district school board members. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to share.
Absolutely, that was very important, thank you. All right, um, the next agenda item is dealing with follow-ups and next steps. I don't have any follow-up information for next steps. Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, November sixth, 2024 at seven PM. All of our meetings are virtual via Zoom. All right, so, closing. I want to thank everyone for having a great meeting tonight. Much better from, from last month. This was a really good meeting. Uh, we can tighten up on some things, but we will get there. So, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight seventeen PM.
Second.
All right, it has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any objections to adjourn this meeting? Here are none. Ms. Welsh, I see, I see. Reading your facial expressions, are you okay? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I'm fine. No, I was actually reacting to you because you were smiling. You had such a big smile, it caused me to smile, so.
Okay. I was getting nervous for a second.
Just because you're, you have, you're just, you're very, you have a lovely smile, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, thank you all tonight. The meeting has been adjourned. I hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
And please, Ms. Barton, don't click off so I can save, save this thing. Save whatever I'm supposed to be trying to save.
Have a good night.
But you can.
All right, thank you all, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.